All right, at this time, I'm going to officially open up the July 8 Southampton Planning Board meeting. And I have Cindy Palmer and Paul Fergal and myself, Paul Damon on your screen. It's Edward Gibson, but I'm using his account. We have two members that are not available tonight, Jim Labrie and Keith Locke. And the first agenda item this evening, and by the way, this is also recorded on cable television, channel 191. The first agenda item tonight is for Teresa York, who has an A and R for 31 Valley Road. And Emily Holmberg for Holmberg &amp; Howe in East Hampton is here representing her to make the presentation. So Emily, I'll let you go forward and bring up your plan.
Okay. So there's the, this is the plan that we prepared for Teresa York. Basically, what's happening is they are creating one lot that will have the entire frontage on Valley Road. And the, that'll be 3.004 acres. And the backland of approximately 21 acres is being sold to the abutter Brenda and Jonathan Labrie.
All right, so you're not creating any new lot, you're just separating a parcel to sell to the abutter, correctly?
Correct.
All right.
And basically, up here on the locust map, this, the small parcel to the west is where the Labrie's own right now. So that, they abutted there for, I'm not sure exactly what the depth is, but they go back quite a ways on the, on that westerly sideline.
So for probably Cindy's information on this, they're, they're not making a non-conforming lot by subdividing this property?
Right, because that's, that's to be considered a separate building lot to be conveyed, combined with the abutter. So, and that, their, their current lot has sufficient frontage for their existing house. So.
Any questions, Paul or Cindy?
When you say the current lot, you're, you're referring to the York lot?
The.
You're not talking about the Labrie lot?
Right, the.
Lot 1.
Lot 1.
Lot 1 has plenty of frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's getting all of it, right.
Can, can you clarify? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Paul, go ahead.
I'm sorry, keep going Cindy.
Nope, you go ahead.
I, I didn't realize you were talking. The question I have is just clarity. So Lot 1, we see that that has a remaining area of 3.004 acres. Then Lot 2, which is really behind it, it says remaining land of Robert Peliquin at all. And not to be considered a separate building lot to be conveyed. Can you just pan up? Okay, here you go. And then it's Jonathan and, excuse me, Brenda and Jonathan Labrie. Okay, so they're the owners to the west, presuming it's west is to the left. Can you zoom out just a tad?
Sure.
All right, perfect. Gotcha, okay, this is good. I, I had my Labries mixed up here, so that, my question, I thought, I thought Lot 2 had different Labries listed than, than the one that was joining too, so.
Okay, yeah.
I'm all set.
Cindy, any other questions from you?
I guess I understand the answer before I even ask the question, but, so this 21 acres would not have any frontage. Therefore, it's, it's not a point, because we're not talking about any kind of building lot on the 21 acres, but one would assume that would never be a building lot. Is that a correct assumption? We're only talking about the York, the Lot 1 right now.
That's correct, I believe.
Yeah, that, yes, that's correct. It's, it's intended to be combined with the Labrie's other, Brenda and Jonathan Labrie's other land.
Okay.
This property is abutted by other Labries to the, to the south and also to the west, but.
Okay.
This one's going to Brenda and Jonathan, which is the direct abutter to the west.
And there's some indication that there's already some structures on there, so they're, they're not building any new structures or anything like that.
No. It's the family house, which the children are, five siblings are now selling. This was, the current owners are Robert Peliquin, Deborah, I can't remember how to pronounce her name, Richard Peliquin, and Donna is Donna Thuen, and Teresa is Teresa York.
I see. I'm gonna ask Paul and Paul a question, so we really don't, there's nothing, everything's meeting code, meeting the frontage requirement, meeting the square lot requirement, there isn't any, anything to really ask beyond this, is this correct?
Yeah, it's, it's just a, they're selling some property to their neighbor.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not making their lot non-conforming, they're just divesting themselves of some property by the looks of it.
Okay.
Paul?
That's exactly right.
Okay, then, I don't have any more questions.
If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the A and R as presented.
So I move to accept the A and R as presented to subdivide this lot?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other further questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It's approved. Now, with our current situation we're in, that we passed several months ago, and it's a good thing, because with this Zoom meetings, it's pretty difficult to get around to get everybody's signature, so the chairman or the vice chair now has the ability to sign the A and R. And it is official with the registry of deeds, so I will sign those maps, Emily, and I'll distribute them to the town offices, and then I probably have got to do an errand the next day or two, and I will bring it to your office on Union Street in East Hampton. Are you open the next two days?
Uh, yes.
So I'll, I'll bring you the MyLars and the other copies, so you can file them.
Okay, yeah, if you want to call just beforehand, because sometimes we only have one person at, at the office, and if we have to go out for an errand, it's good to know.
Or would it be more convenient to maybe connect with Teresa York?
It might be.
All right, I'll, I'll get ahold of Teresa tomorrow somehow and see if I can connect with her, if that's more convenient.
Yeah, I mean, we should, we should be here, it's just, you know, if I step out to go to the post office and I'm the only one here, you might miss me, that's all.
All right, great. Well, thank you Emily for guiding us through that chart, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, can you close out of that now? There we go. All right, thank you. The next on the agenda, Mark Reed is here to represent Daniel and Rebecca Haskas of 101 Fulmer Road, who has a application in for residential stormwater permit. And this is a public hearing, and I will read you the notification that was published in the Daily Hampshire Gazette, and also was mailed to the abutters. I personally mailed them. And here is the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given in accordance with provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, that the planning board will hold a public hearing on a residential stormwater permit application Wednesday, July 8, 2020, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. This is for Daniel and Rebecca Haskas at 101 Fulmer Road, map 247, Lot 2, page 5. Details are by contacting the SouthamptonPlanningBoard@gmail.com. This also will be televised by East Hampton Media, channel 191. And the legal notice was published in the Daily Hampshire Gazette on June 22nd and 29th. So, Mark, if you would, I have the, received the application, I've received the cover letter, hopefully Paul and Cindy, you have it as well, in the check for the permit application. So I'll now ask Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys to walk us through this.
Sure. Good evening. I'm going to put up a share of the plan that we prepared on behalf of the Haskas that are proposing to construct a single-family house. Come on, where'd it go?
Add the cocktail sauce, huh?
Yeah. Where'd it go?
It says computer screen, he's starting to get it on.
Is this your account or your wife's account? What's going on?
Oh, yeah, this is both, that, I'm M. and my wife Linda. Yeah, right, yeah.
I was just wondering what the Kate Spade surprises?
Yeah. So, the Haskas own a parcel 2, which is shown on the plan. The planning board had previously signed an A and R plan that was currently owned by Jeffrey, the abutting piece, and that Lot 2 was owned by Jeffrey and Carolyn Florrick. And I don't remember the date of.
Excuse me, can I just interrupt a minute? My screen is reading somebody's email.
Yours is?
Yeah, so is mine.
We're, we're only seeing your email.
Yeah, I can't see the plan yet.
That's weird. Oh, yeah.
You might have the wrong screen shared.
Yeah, here you go. Is that it?
There you go.
Okay, sorry, I picked the wrong one.
Thank you, Mark.
So, this piece of property is located on the southerly side of Fulmer Road, approximately 2,000 feet from the intersection of Crookledge Road and Fulmer Road. And as I was mentioning, that the board signed this A and R plan previously, the land was owned by the Florrics. Rebecca Haskas is Jeffrey and Carolyn's daughter, and they are proposing to build a single-family house located on this piece of property, as shown on the plan. The site itself is a one and a half acre parcel of land, and it was really heavily wooded with a lot of old timber pines and trees that were very dense and really failing. So it facilitated the need to really clear cut the parcel, and the disturbance area is 64,125 feet. There is a small section of woods that's going to be retained, 3,300 square feet on the property. There is woods that is located to the west of the property, and to the east of the property, and to the south of the property in itself. But the lot in itself had a lot of dead wood on it, a lot of dead trees, never was managed properly over the years. So in order to be able to construct a single-family house safely, so that future trees don't fall on the lot, they're proposing to clear the lot. A stone tracking pad has been installed, as well as a silt fence running along the entire southerly or southeastally side of the property, as shown on the plan. And then wrapping up, the flow is from the west to the east, as topography slopes down on the property, so that they've already installed the silt fence to ensure that, that no erosion occurs to the abutting property located to the east, owned by the Florrics, for it. Application did include a septic plan that was prepared by, by another firm within that, and I can show you that relative to the, if you like, relative to the sewage disposal plan. The lot is served by a well, there is no town water in this section of Fulmer Road for the, for the property in itself.
Mark, what is this dark area up towards Fulmer Road? What does that represent? I can't quite see it.
Yeah, that's, that, Cindy, that's a stone tracking pad, so that's so that when trucks exit the site, the tires get cleaned in the stone tracking pad. My little Zoom thing here. Okay, man. So that's in that dark area. Why am I not seeing my Zoom? The PDF's not allowing me to do that.
Okay.
But this dark area up in here, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Yeah, so this area here is a stone tracking pad.
Okay.
That they installed. It's there today, so that makes sure that any vehicles exiting the site will clean the tires off of it.
Okay.
The mud and sand and so forth doesn't get down on Fulmer Road.
Okay, so the planning board already approved the A and R for the building.
Yes.
And we asked the question of the Florrics, I remember, because this had been in chapter status, but this was for their daughter, so that of course is allowed for them to build. And all we're doing tonight is really just looking at the, the stormwater plan.
Correct.
Okay.
Just looking up now when you sign the A and R plan.
Yep, I, I remember it, I don't remember when, but.
Right, yeah, and it is remaining in, because it's in family ownership.
Yeah.
For that purpose, yes, Cindy.
Okay.
Now, Mark, on your cover letter, you're, with the 64,125 disturbance area, the applicant is asking for a waiver from any drainage analysis and stormwater management.
Yes.
Want to explain?
So that's typical, you've done in other applications for a single-family under the stormwater permit, waived drainage calculations and design. And we're requesting the same for this application in itself.
Now, are you saying that that is just for design, not, because there's no, there's no detention area shown on this, this map?
No, there's not. There's no detention area shown on the plan. Under the stormwater management policy, single-family houses are exempt under the Mass DEP stormwater management policy, when you construct a single-family house.
But it's not exempt on, under, under our bar laws.
Correct, and that's why we asked, correct, and that's why we asked for the waiver on that.
I, I do have several questions.
Sure.
Paul, if you don't mind me asking.
No, go ahead.
There's a couple obvious red flags that I'm noticing here. Not being familiar with the site, but looking at the topography, it appears to me that, you know, there's, there's particularly, starting where the site access with the rock pad is proposed, there appears to be a, looks like a natural swale or natural waterway that potentially could be impacted by this, you know, by this access, as well as its impact to the grading that might be done with the clearing, as well as what happens. Can you zoom into the elevations? It's not, it's not really obvious to me what's going on with the elevations, particularly near the. So everything is going to the east, everything's flowing to the east?
Everything's flowing to the east.
And these are all existing contours you're maintaining here? Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, so this area here, Paul, and I just found my tool, this area, this swale area, the, the topography flows, there's five foot difference, this is a 190, 90 contour line, it's a 95 contour line. The owner is in the process of filling in this existing swale, so that they'll maintain a, a straight topography across in this area here. And when we did the survey work, he had not finished this area, it's in process, doing the work. So what his intention is, is to be able to take the grades from the road, the 95, for instance, grade, and bring it across, so it's a nice gradual slope, and not create a drainage swale, defined drainage swale through his front yard for it. Same with the 90 contour line, is to be able to fill this area in, so that he's got a nice flat sloping front yard, west to the east.
My biggest concern and red flag with all filling in land, changing the topography, you know, the homeowners looking to do all these topo changes, you don't even have a professional engineer stamp on this plan. I mean, this is a red flag, and I, I can't see this being, I'm, I'm not in support of, of endorsing this approval without somebody saying that impacts with the regrading and filling in the contours, filling in those depressed areas, is not going to impact neighboring parcels, or impact the overall topography or operations of the drainage system on Fulmer Road. From what I understand, you know, across town, you know, homeowners have been doing some, some extensive changes to their properties, and impacts to downstream parcels have been, have been impacted by work that, that has been done. I think, you know, you know, you're asking for a waiver from a stormwater report, which I think is a sound request, however, I don't necessarily think that this plan is adequate for regrading this parcel, particularly with some limited, you know, silt fences and filling in what appears to be a drainage swale that is conveying water potentially from the west. So I, I'm dumbfounded that this is actually in front of us without a professional engineer stamp, and hearing these requests for us to be filling that in, I mean, allowing that to be filled in without even seeing that, that, that to me is, I'm scratching my head.
Okay, well, there is no, there is no conveying of water through that channel as it exists today, Paul, if you went up there and saw it. The road drainage from this piece of property stays within the curbed roadway, there's catch basins that are shown on the plan, so you're not getting any runoff from Fulmer Road onto the property.
Is that a fact?
What's that?
Is that a fact?
Yeah, you can see it, there's the catch basins, if you go up.
How do we, I mean, water flows perpendicular to contours. I, I could see a potential for water falling off of, you know, where the 100 contour is, and potentially going down the property, crossing the property line and going to the east, basically where that swale widens out. So I, I'm not necessarily convinced, based on what you're saying to me, that the roadway drainage, or the side of road drainage is being conveyed by the roadway system. So I would like a professional engineer to state that what's being done here isn't going to impact Fulmer Road's drainage system, or neighboring drainage system with all this clearing.
Okay.
I always defer to the engineer, Paul being the engineer, so I'm going to agree with Paul, but I also am going to ask the question about filling in a swale, isn't that something that potentially, I mean, has this been run by the Conservation Commission? Is this consistent with wetlands guidance?
There are no, there are no wetlands on the property. It's, it's the property that they started working and grading. The house itself is, is not going to go anywhere near the swale that Paul's talking about in the front of the property, the house is back.
Isn't a swale sometimes a wetland? It's, I got one on my property, it's a swale, and it's water that goes through, especially during the spring. Isn't that what a swale is?
This is a new swale that was, has just been created by the recent work, if, if you go up to the site and look at it.
Which I've seen, by the way, yeah, uh-huh.
You know, all this area here is all new, this never went.
So they can, landowner actually work without coming for a stormwater permit?
Work has started on the property, yes.
I mean, I, I think.
Nothing was applied for prior to any disturbance, no.
Correct.
Mark, question for you, you know, three or four weeks ago, Jim Labrie Jr. over on Gun Road, which had a storm, residential stormwater application in, which was considerably less in disturbance, so what's, what's the difference?
Between this lot?
You know, what's, what's the big difference between what we went through a few weeks back with Jim Labrie Jr. on Gun Road versus, you know, this? Why does this require requesting a waiver, and yet the previous ones, and I don't?
We did, we did, Paul, we did request for Jim Labrie Jr.'s a waiver, also, the same waiver we requested for his, if you look at.
But he installed basins of some sort, detention pond, correct?
No, no, he did not. No, it was only erosion control barriers. There are no basins that were proposed for his property at all.
So, I mean, there's a lot of other obvious questions, you're not even showing proposed grades, you're filling in something that is shown to be existing, you're not showing what its final grade is going to be, you know, the silt fence doesn't even continue all the, the property line, it's not clear exactly how, how this lot's changing, what the disturbance is, I mean, I'm not even sure why we're here today.
This area here is where the silt fence ends, Paul, is a high point in the property, the contours, this is a high point that this water flows towards Fulmer Road in the catch basins, and water from this point flows down to the south and to the east.
I, I, I understand how water flows, but I understand you're changing the contours here, so how do you expect us to understand what that's going to look like at a later date with, with contours that won't be even there later?
Okay, so I can go back to the applicant and discuss this with him.
This has a long way to go, Mark.
Yep.
Well, given the, and I agree with you, Paul, you're, that's why you're invaluable on this board because of your engineering background, that's something that Cindy and I certainly lack. So, given that, and the questions you have, I'm of the mind that we've got to continue this hearing until you can get some verification on what these, this swale is going to be like in the stamping from an engineer and a better explanation. I don't know, Paul, if you. I don't know, Paul, if you want to detail more what you, you need to uh add on this.
I, I, I think, I think you summarized it well there, Paul. Um, I don't think we necessarily need to do a drainage report because that could go forever. Uh, and that's not what we really, I think we have an intent with, with this type of project that's, that's being impacted. Um, I do think that, you know, we're not showing any proposed grades, we're not showing um the extent of what's really happening. I mean, it's easy for us to say that disturbance is going to be 1.5 acres, but it doesn't really necessarily describe uh what, what that disturbance is going to look like, what impact does it have to adjacent property? How is existing um contours upstream potentially impacted by the change of these grades? Is former road now going to see more potential flow? Because some natural runoff is coming off of former onto, onto this parcel, which based on these contours, that, that could be suggesting that is the case. So I, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions and um, you know, putting a driveway where it's theirs, that uh, is there a need for any other features from a stormwater standpoint? I mean, it's, you know, to me, from a surface level, it doesn't seem like it needs a culvert or anything on any driveway. But, you know, it's not my place to, to make a decision based on looking at this for fifteen minutes and saying, oh, this looks great. But, you know, I think there's a lot of questions that still need to be addressed.
So are you looking for proposed grading on the entire parcel of land, Paul?
That's usually what we see when we have a disturbance plan that shows.
Cause we do have proposed grading um shown on the septic plan. Um, which is part of the application that I can show you. Um, being this plan was prepared by um a sanitarian um for, that meets the requirements of the Title V, that shows proposed grading for the septic system. Um, so that's part of the application at the rear of the property.
Does the grading continue to the former roadside?
So it does not, it does not show anything going in, it does show a twelve inch culvert being put, placed underneath the driveway, proposed driveway, but does not show any grading.
You're, you're making my point, Mark. I mean, you're, you're, you're putting fuel on the fire here. On this plan, you're showing a twelve inch culvert, but there's no mention of that on your other plan, right?
No, it's shown in here.
What is that supposed to mean? I mean, that's, that's what I was calling out, like, you're, you're running a driveway, you're showing, you know, this is a septic plan, it's not a grading plan for the entire site. So you're, you're telling me you're filling in, you know, the swell or what appears to be a swell to the um east of the driveway, that's not shown here. And now you kind of have a piecemeal twelve inch culvert that's, to me, the fact there's a culvert here implies there's now concentrated flow coming through the um site. And you're now going to be creating concentrated flow even more so, and now it's going to a former swell. Now, is that what we want to do? Might be the answer, yes, but we need to have somebody to, to say and stamp it in one plan rather than piecemealing something and, you know, saying another consultant showed a culvert that is not the intent of a plan, being a septic grading plan. Um, because that has nothing to do with the septic tank or the septic system.
Okay, we can add it to them.
Yeah, Mark, that's um I was kind of curious why that information was not shown on the original plan, you know, and also some of the grading like Paul was, usually you got a plan and it shows where the driveway is, um, where the septic is, it's all in one plan and this just was on the incomplete side.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did not prepare the septic plan. Um, like I said, someone else did. So we didn't do a comprehensive plan showing the entire site.
Well, not to belabor this because it's pretty obvious that um we've got to continue this. And Paul, I'll ask you for a motion to uh continue. And it's just a matter of date now because I don't have, because the three of us are involved in this, we're the only three uh that can act on it unless, of course, the others invoke the uh Mullen Rule and, and watch this on the recording. But um.
So, Paul?
Yes.
Before you go on, I just want to, at least on my screen, I see an individual that I don't recognize. I didn't know if this individual is here for the public hearing and whether that person wants to speak.
Yes, uh, I'm Bernard Grinkwitz, I'm uh across the street from this construction. Do you hear me?
Yes. I'm not hearing very well, it's breaking up.
All right, uh, one thing of my concern is uh this swell and uh the silt fence that is installed now. Uh, obviously, the plan is to allow more water to travel to the east. There is a brook that crosses underneath former road to the east of this lot. If we're going to start putting excess amounts of water and uh possibly road contaminants into the brook, I think you need an engineering impact study on this also.
Um, would you be okay identifying who you are? I, you may have said it and I didn't hear it.
Hey, just.
What is your name?
Grinkwitz, 104 Former Road.
Did everybody hear that? Cause I didn't hear his name.
Last name again, sir? Grinkwitz.
We, we can type it in.
Spell it, I'll just spell.
G R Y N K I E W I C Z.
Thank you.
So just to be understood, you're, you're across the street and you are aware of some water that goes under former road, is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yes, there is a uh brook that runs through my property and through the property of 102 and 100 and crosses uh former road, underneath the road and into the uh property east of this lot. At the Mattson's residence at 98 Former. So by, my concern is uh kind of like cross contamination of road water and excess runoff running into the brook and, you know, consequences later on.
Thank you.
This is really important to hear you.
Um. Paul, you want to uh make a motion to continue?
I'd like to make a motion to continue until our next meeting, which is likely, what are we?
Right now, I'm looking at either the 12th or the 19th of August, so I don't, have you got vacation plans in mind?
No, uh, not yet.
Cindy, I think you said you were not available early on in August.
Um, I am available the 12th, I'm not available the week before.
Okay, so I could schedule this for the 12th or the 19th, that'll be enough time, Mark, to uh get together the information we need?
Yes.
And a, a critical point is a stamp of a, of an engineer on, on the whole process. Is that right, Paul Fergal? Is that what we need?
Yes.
Okay. And this other person could perhaps be present, this other individual that lives across the street, Mr. Grinkwitz?
Correct.
Great.
Okay, Cindy, did you second that motion by?
I will sec- I second the motion.
All right, I will confirm the, the uh continuance date of the 12th to the 19th, but it'll be either one of those dates. So without any further questions, um, do I have a motion to?
Well, wait a minute, we have to vote on that motion, that.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I, I have, I want to ask if, without any other further questions, that we have a vote to continue the meeting.
Aye.
Uh, well, my, my motion wasn't seconded.
Yeah, Cindy did.
I seconded it, Paul.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So that's uh three, three zero zero to continue.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Mark, and uh we'll talk to you down the road.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No, no, that's the end of it.
Uh, over here for us.
All right, next on the agenda, I've had, uh, in the course of the last two weeks, I've uh approved three building permits. I have one for Richard Trueheart of Ten Burchwood Drive. The disturbance was thirty-eight thousand two hundred feet. I have another one for.
Can I, can I ask a question about that one, Paul? So um I'm pretty familiar with that lot, it's really close to where I live. And um that was already approved as a building, this is a question, was that already approved as a building lot? Does it have the adequate frontage?
Yeah, the, the A and R would have preceded the building permit, yes.
Okay, cause that sort of precedes my time on the board, I don't recall that being brought up, so, okay.
Yeah. So that was for Ten Burchwood, the other one was for Ryan Gielher, lot number five on Fitch Farm Way. Um, that was part of the subdivision that's already has stormwater management. And then the last one was David Hardy, who's, who's working for K and J Piper at sixty-one Gun Road. And that had a uh disturbance of thirty-eight five hundred on two point six seven nine acres. Um, and those were all stamped by engineers and I've sent them off. So if I could just for the record of the minutes, have a uh motion to approve those.
I move to approve those three building permits that you signed as chair.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next. I had an email from Patty Gamborini about the MS4 stormwater, uh, because we didn't have a quorum the last time. That's going to be put off until either August 12th or 19th when we meet again. Um, cause I'd kind of like to have the rest of the board members weigh in on that. Um, other than that, I have a, a contract that I want your approval to sign. It's a yearly contract that we do with PVPC about their planning services. Particularly Ken Comia, who is now our representative, if he should do any consult, consulting work for us or act on our behalf. Um, doing municipal department reviews, attending meetings, draft decisions and so on and so forth. So it's a standard contract we sign every year and it's approved by the town accountant. So I just ask for a motion to uh sign that agreement for PVPC.
Can I just ask a question, are the terms the same that you've had in the past?
Yeah, it's, it's an hourly rate plus uh mileage plus any supplies they happen to use.
And are part of the terms that you, the chair, has to request the im- the input? I mean, it's not an automatic kind of circumstance where he shows up or anything like that, you have to ask for his input.
It's, it's something that we decide as a board if we want consulting on his behalf, similar to what we did with Larry Smith.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'm fine, I, I moved to, uh, have you signed that contract?
Second.
Um, just, if we can just hold that for a second, I guess my only question is is there any terms in there about, or is it understood with PVPC that they should, they're, they will give us a estimated um spending on particular tasks, because the last time we had some questions about some billing.
In other words, in other words, a, like a, an estimate of what the, it might run us?
Correct, per each task, or whatever that's doing, because I feel like um last time we were not satisfied with some spending.
No, there's no, there's no provision for that, here's uh paragraph seven in the contract. Town shall pay the commission a fee in an amount not to exceed nine thousand five hundred dollars, including direct reimbursable expenses based upon invoices submitted in an approved format in accordance with attachment A. Travel costs will be billed at the established IRS rate for reimbursement. Any direct costs, i.e. copying, mailing, et cetera, shall be reimbursed at straight cost. The commission will be reimbursed only for those actual services performed and/or costs incurred. Payment from the town of Southampton shall be made within thirty days, so. No, it's just uh time, but there's, I could, I could certainly add in that, that would uh on any project other than just a phone call or an email, that we would get an estimate going forward.
And, and along those lines, in terms of travel, did I understand it's not just reimbursement at the IRS rate for uh mileage, but it's also travel time, is that correct?
Yeah, his, his, his time starts when he's traveling, his time starts with us, the time he leaves, the time he.
Okay, so i- in this age of COVID, um, I happen to know the PVPC office is not even open that much. Secondly, I happen to know Ken Comia lives in East Hampton, so um uh, you know, I know we, we really need to be careful about our expenditures. Um, so I think we need to be cautious about whether we're being charged for distance from Congress Street in Springfield all the way to Southampton or, or what. And I, you know, I, I'm with Paul Fergal in the sense of being careful about how we're expending money and nothing about Ken Comey, I think he's done a wonderful job in the circumstances I've been dealing with him in, but we need to be kind of cautious about all of those aspects.
So, so standard practices, they're not going to charge you for, if it's a Zoom meeting, um that's uh, that they're joining in for travel, I mean, that's, you know, if he does, then we've got serious problems. But um, the, the standard practice is for them to, to do, to charge from their from their point of, point of uh business if they're physically coming here, so.
Okay, so that's from Congress Street in Springfield, no matter where they relive.
There's a whole lot of debate, this is the gray area we're talking about now in terms of.
I get you, I get you.
You know, there's, there's, sometimes you'll see consultants charge you the, the delta. That's, you know, if it takes, if it's twelve mi- twelve miles from Springfield to his place in East Hampton and it's five miles from his house to here, in reality, you should be able to be charging five miles to get here and then five miles to leave, so. Basically, it's, it, we're in a gray area here with the way that it's all. So.
Well, I will entertain a motion then, Paul, if you want to make it, that if we approve this contract that we just put a, a clause in there, I put an addendum that the, an estimate um will be uh procured before going forward.
Well, if he's going to make an alternate motion, then I'm going to withdraw my motion, because I are you going to do that, Paul, Fergal?
Uh, if you want, we can do whatever, we can amend it or uh or withdraw or start a new.
I'll withdraw my motion just to accept the contract as written, that's withdrawn.
Okay, go ahead then, Paul.
Let's make a motion to accept the contract with provisions for uh not to exceed per task um as, as requested by the planning board um for, for each occurrence that's uh being requested of PVPC.
My second.
Motion's made in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next, I had a communication that I think I sent to you about, uh, Fitch Farm Way and Gill Farm Way that John Furman, VHB, our inspector on those subdivisions. Everything is going along smoothly at Fitch Farm. He was over there. They were doing some paving. He was there with, uh, Randall Kemp from Highway. And then while he was there, he noticed, uh, that there was no equipment on the Gill Farm property. It'd all been, uh, removed, all the, uh, heavy equipment. So John sent off an email to the, uh, contractor. And I was on my way back from Maryland, so, um, that next day, I sent off a letter to Attorney Gary Lacory asking for an explanation. And, um, I forwarded that letter to you too. In fact, I guess this guy is tied up in some other projects, and he wanted to, uh, get started on them wherever they happen to be. And he said that he will be returning next week to finish things that John had on his list, um, that have gone undone, so we'll see what happens there.
Do we have to do anything about that, Paul, or you're just kind of bringing this up today?
We just, we have to give it some time. Uh, hopefully, the, the attorney, from the contractor, he's telling the truth, gets back in here.
Okay.
Well, I mean, technically, he's got, he's got extra more time to do something, so.
Yeah, he just, uh, the, the thing that disturbed John is he left some, uh, whether they were basins open or something, that somebody could fall into or a car could drive in there and, uh, disappear into or something like that, but, he's keeping tabs on it anyway. Next. I have some warrants that I have to get approved for payment. Some of them we had previously approved, but they had gone unpaid because I can't get everybody's signature. We need five signatures, so the town accountant, uh, suggested that, like we do with A and Rs, uh, and the select board does it, I guess, John, that, uh, we authorize one person from the board to sign the, uh, the warrant, so we can get these things paid because they're wrapping up fiscal twenty. So first of all, I'm going to ask for a motion that the chair or vice chair, like we did with A and Rs, has the ability to sign the warrants. We will still read the disbursements and the expenditures at a meeting to make them official in the minutes, but we, in order to get, get them processed in a timely fashion, we're going to give the chairman or the vice chair the ability to, uh, sign that warrant.
I move to allow the chair or the vice chair sign the warrants and, uh, not require the signature of the entire board or the quorum present.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Therefore, I have for VHB a nine hundred dollar invoice for Fitch Farm Way, a six sixty-seven fifty invoice for Gill Farm Way, another nine hundred dollar invoice for Fitch Farm Way, and twelve oh seven fifty for Gill Farm Way. So a total disbursement of three thousand six seventy-five. And these are being reimbursed by the, uh, developers.
I move to accept those warrants as written, as presented.
Sorry to be the question. It's one question. Do they exceed the contract values as established previously? Because I know that, uh,
No, John, John had put out a estimate on each one of those at five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Currently, Fitch Farm is at like, uh, eighteen hundred. And Gill Farm is almost nineteen hundred, so.
Okay.
And then next, the Daily Hampshire Gazette for legal ads. One was for the Jim LeBree, um, stormwater, and the other one was for the one we just had tonight, the Floric Aska, uh, two thirty-one twenty-four and two fifty-five sixteen, again, which are being, have been reimbursed by the applicants. And that's four eighty-six forty for the Daily Hampshire Gazette.
I move to, uh, approve the warrant for the, uh, Gazette as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we still need to vote on?
You didn't get the vote on the other one.
What?
On the Furman's one.
The VHB invoices.
Yeah, did we vote on that?
No.
No.
If I had a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then finally, Larry Smith, who was away most of the winter, he sent his own invoice for, uh, this year, one hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. So that's for his consulting that he did with us last fiscal. So one and a half hours, so at seventy-five dollars an hour, so one twelve fifty for Larry Smith.
I, uh, motion to, to approve that invoice for Larry Smith.
Second, Cindy?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that, my friends, is all I can find. Cindy, do you have any comments or, uh, statements you'd like to make about committees?
I sure do. First of all, um, I know that the stormwater, um, coating, which you've already mentioned, she's, uh, exceeded her contract, Patty Gamborini from PVPC, but she's approved for continuing with, uh, presentation to the planning board, and I know Paul mentioned that. And a very, I agree entirely that having the, the full planning board present, if possible, in August is going to be really important. And all the other committee members, including somebody from Concom, Art Lawrence, Randall, and Ed will be present as well, so, um, I'm glad that's been moved for, forward to August, what was it, nineteenth?
The twelfth and the nineteenth, right.
Yeah, all right. So that's good. Um, I know a lot of work's gone into that. All right, secondly, um, so the Master Plan Implementation Committee has done a ton of work, and I did send to a lot of people a personal request to please complete the community engagement survey, which has really been built out of the original survey that was done for the master plan. This is not a rewriting of the master plan by any means. It's only, um, establishing what current thinking is in the town of Southampton. And the good news is that within the first week, we had a five percent return, which is pretty high for one week. It's going to go all the way through the, uh, end of the summer to August thirty-first. Lot of activity's been put in in terms of advertising and, you know, getting people involved. If you haven't done it, please do it. If you could make certain everybody in your household does it. And also, we're looking for a minimum of ten percent return. That's pretty low, but that's considered good. So that's my plea for the, for that part of it. It's, I enjoy this committee a lot. It's a very energetic group. And I think it's the best thing for the town to understand what people really want. The third thing is the Open Space Committee. Um, we have been, um, an ad hoc committee of the town, of the select board for a year and a half now. And we're, uh, moving forward to become an active, um, appointed committee, uh, versus ad hoc. I think it's on the agenda for the select board, which is tomorrow night. And, um, just for your information, John Martin, because I see you here, I had sent a fourth draft of that, of that charge back to Ed last Friday. Chris Falls called me just before this meeting to say, "That didn't show up in your packet." For your information, the, um, the Open Space Committee will, we hope, will be a, a committee of seven appointed members, appointed from different boards and different committees, one at-large member, but will also take on the role of updating the Open Space and Recreation Plan. It's about, it's in process right now for update, but over time, every seven years approximately, we'll need update, and that'll fall under the responsibility of the Open Space Committee. And then in that period of time, it will expand to a committee of fifteen with representation from additional boards and committees. So I've sent that off to Ed Gibson, John Martin. Hopefully, he'll see that fourth draft. But that's kind of a select board issue.
Well, I'll, I'll call him tomorrow, Cindy, and make sure we have it, because we discussed it at our last meeting quite a bit.
I have a feeling. Well, thank you for doing that, but I think Chris might do it as well, and I copied Rainey on it, so.
Okay, so where else?
I hope so, yeah. The other thing I want to say is, um, the, um, Open Space Committee, um, received actually via the Conservation Committee, a letter from the Water Commissioner in Hoyoke. And, um, this is kind of a standard letter that said, "We need to protect our, um, our, uh, our water recharge district specifically surrounding the Ti'karmodi Reservoir." Hi, Barry. And, um, so there is a very large piece of property that's for sale that's, um, not exactly a budding the Ti'karmodi Reservoir, but close to the, um, the lands that would, you know, be the feeder lands for the Ti'karmodi Reservoir. They need to protect their water source, obviously. So we sent a letter directly to the Water Commissioner and, from the Open Space Committee, and, um, copied, um, the, um, town administrator, we copied the chairperson of the Conservation Commission, just to let them know that that piece of land, which is something like, you get different measurements, something like two hundred and seventy or three hundred acres. It's for sale for about a million dollars right now. Uh, it's on Fomer Road, two ninety-one Fomer Road specifically. We let them know that that is for sale. It's for sale for a million minimum. They want more, but they, they're looking for about a million dollars. There's only one building lot.
Oh, my.
Some deep-pocket individual might want to buy it, but hard to say. So I just want to update you on that. It's, I should be pretty clear that the, um, city of Hoyoke will, will want to be sure to know about that, should it ever be sold.
Cindy, is that the Hoyoke Water Works property?
Yes. No, it's not owned by them, Barry. It's, um, it's owned by a, a gentleman whose last name is Smith. It's on two ninety-one Fomer. Do you know where that is, Barry?
I don't know the number. It must be pretty far up.
It is. I've driven up there. It's far up, so.
How many acres, did you say?
Well, it's variable. The, the realtor is posting it for, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me, if there's something like two hundred and seventy acres, but the actual number of acres is perhaps a little less. So, um, we, we have been actively trying to coordinate with the city of Hoyoke and the Water Commission to be sure they understand about that, um, the availability on that. So that's just one point. The second thing is, we have been actively involved with submitting to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee, the Update Committee, some guidelines for, um, preservation of lands. We, we respect, landowners have rights, we know that. Um, on the other hand, we want to make sure to be actively involved in educating landowners about their options and also being very discreet about, uh, utilizing landowners' names or addresses in our discussion of any kind of land preservation. We're only using assessor map, lots, uh, map and lot in order to protect that, but that's a process that's going forward. And, you know, this whole thing is going to be informed by what comes out of the update of the master plan implementation. Does the, does the town of Southampton really want to protect open spaces? And also zoning issues, et cetera, so this, it's pretty complex and pretty involved, and I frankly think pretty exciting for us at this point in time in, in our town. So that's the quick update.
Thank you, Cindy. This gentleman that just joined in, is there something that you would like to add, or were you in on the meeting for a reason?
Well, I'm late getting here. I was trying to log in about the Jeffrey Florick, uh, idea in the beginning. I don't even know what that was about or what happened. And I'm sorry I'm so late. I couldn't get here any quicker.
It was a stormwater permit application that was filed because of the, uh, disturbance on the property that he's building a house on.
Okay.
And the hearing was continued until either August twelfth or nineteenth because of lack of information that we need, so it will be heard again.
I see.
Just keep posted, uh, mark the dates down, and you can confirm it on the town website, but, uh, are you in a butter?
Yes. Yes. I own the Wolf Hill property, uh, that surrounds that, actually, kind of. So.
So if you tune in the next time, uh, we ask for further engineering information about, uh, flows and culverts and some other good stuff, so it's on hold right now.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Right, thank you. Anyone else have anything to add before I ask for adjournment?
Uh, just if we got a second, maybe a, a point of interest to you, because you deal with the building commissioner. We had, uh, the job posting, and we had several applicants apply for. We went through the interview process. And at tomorrow night's select board meeting, we're going to have, uh, uh, applicant, uh, that we recommend that be hired and take over the job full-time, so if you want to hear who that is, just tune in tomorrow's meeting.
Thanks, John, but you recall.
I'm going to be there, John. I'm going to be there at that meeting, so that's good.
Did you recall, did I mention at the last meeting about the, I think you were tuned in about the number of emails and phone calls I get regarding zoning issues and stuff, and I, I would just hope in the interview process, or if you've already made your decision, that going forward, that the, uh, the new commissioner, um, you know, reads, reads the zoning, and when questions arise, he tries to answer them for them rather than passing them along to the board.
Well, I guess what I can say in general without, you know, being specific on who we interviewed is, we talked about zoning issues to all the applicants that we interviewed, and they were on track that there was their responsibility. And if they didn't know the answer, then they would call somebody at a state level to get the answers for the, uh, person asking the question. So that should help with you, Paul.
I'm, I'm glad to be of, be of service, but sometimes it gets a little overbearing, uh, especially the last six months.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, John. Uh, anyone else? What else?
No, I have a question.
Go ahead.
What's going on with Larry Smith and the zoning update?
I haven't heard anything from Larry. He, he hasn't mentioned anything, uh, since we've been back, so I guess I'll have to reach out to him. I, I don't know. I get the sense that he would prefer not to do it via Zoom.
Let me just tell you that, um, Conant Park is available, the pavilion, for, for groups of twenty-five, no greater than twenty-five. It's not the best. I don't know if we can do the East Hampton media filming there. But as long as the weather is reasonable, even if it's raining, we could be, um, not zooming. We could meet. We wouldn't be in a, a building. Just throwing that out as a possibility for one of our August meetings or both of our August meetings. Don't know if it's possible, like I said, for East Hampton media.
They have portable equipment, so if we gave them enough notice, they could bring it. It's like the town meeting, which is going to be outside. They're going to bring equipment.
Okay, so John, um, am I right that at least, I heard that maybe the Board of Health had met there one time? Is that incorrect? I don't know the answer.
I, I haven't heard that.
Yeah. So if, you know, just throwing that out as an option.
There's no definitive, John, on when the state might ease restrictions on that for going back to town hall?
No, uh, I forget the date. Uh, there was just something sent out. I want to say September first, we're talking about opening town hall. We'll talk about it again at tomorrow's meeting.
Hey, John.
I think, yes.
I actually attended a public.
I actually attended a public hearing last night in Ludlow that was at the DPW. It was the Board of GPW Commission. So some communities are actually.
Right. We talked about, yeah, we talked about when we wanted to reopen and we're going to be talking about it again tomorrow. We, you know, somebody threw out August 1st and somebody said September 1st. And I don't remember if we made an absolute decision, but tomorrow we'll talk about it again. I mean, I personally, I think August 1st is a little, a little too soon, but you know, that's only one person's opinion. So we'll have to see.
Oh, just a question. How many people did they allow in that room? Was it as big as our hearing room?
It was smaller than a hearing room. They had, they had it marked out for assigned seating or the spacing per se. There was probably, funny thing is, there were five commissioners and there were probably another five in the audience, including myself. So maybe about 10 people in the room. And funny thing is, no, not everybody was wearing a mask. Didn't bother me, I'm just saying.
All right, folks. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, people. Thank you very much and stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much.